Conduct in the City Council Chambers. Rules of decorum for the public. Members of the audience shall not engage in disorderly or boisterous conduct, including the utterance of loud, threatening, or abusive language, clapping, whistling, stamping of feet, or other acts which disturb, disrupt, impede, or otherwise render the orderly conduct of the city meeting infeasible. A member of the audience engaging in any such conduct shall, at the discretion of the presiding officer or a majority of the city council, be subject to ejection from the meeting per Government Code Section 54954.3C. Removal from the council chambers. Any person who commits the following acts in respect to a meeting of the cities shall be removed from the council chambers per Government Code Section 54954.3C. A disorderly, contemptuous, or insolent behavior towards the city council or any member thereof tending to interrupt the due and orderly course of said meeting; a breach of peace, boisterous conduct, or violent disturbance tending to interrupt the due and orderly course of said meeting; disobedience of any lawful order from the mayor, which shall include an order to be seated or to refrain from addressing the city council; and any other unlawful interference with the due and orderly course of said meeting. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the TAF City Council Successor Agency Joint Regularly Scheduled Meeting for Tuesday, March the 18th, 2025. City of TAF council meetings are being held in person with full capacity seating and are live streamed at www.youtube.com/user/cityoftaf. Public comment can be made in person and also can be received per the following. Written comments may be dropped off in the drop box in front of City Hall. Comments may be emailed to thecityclerk@cityoftaft.org. They may also be made by phone to the city clerk's office at 661-763-1222. Public comments will be accepted up until 5:00 PM the day of the meeting, and all comments received will be read into the record. We're going to begin this evening's meeting with a pledge of allegiance led by Councilman Waldrop, followed by an invocation from Pastor Lloyd. So if you would all stand and join us, please.
Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we do come with expectations in our heart, Lord, that business can be accomplished, Father, for the city of Taft. Lord, I pray for the businesses of our community, that success would come, prosperity would be upon them, Lord. I pray, Lord, for the governance of this community through the chamber, through this chamber, Lord, and through our different employees that are working here at this city hall. I pray, God, that you would bless them, give them wisdom and guidance. I pray for protection for all of our officers that are duly assigned as their offices, cops, and traffic, and domestic issues. We pray, Lord, for every city employee that works in our area. We thank you for this time, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Nor.
Here.
Councilmember Cryer.
Here.
Councilmember Waldrop.
Here.
And Mayor Pro Tem Bryant, Councilmember Cryer's, Councilmember Shaver are absent with notice.
All right, thank you very much. I want to thank you two gentlemen for being here. If it weren't for you, we wouldn't be doing the people's business tonight, so thank you. All right, first item on the agenda for this evening is proclamation for American Red Cross Month in the city of Taft. The proclamation declaring March 2025 American Red Cross Month in Taft. Whereas we celebrate American Red Cross Month by recognizing the compassionate acts of people in Taft and renewing commitment to lend a helping hand to neighbors in need. Since Clara Barton founded the American Red Cross more than 140 years ago, generations have stepped up to deliver relief and care across our country and world, bringing out the best in humanity. Whereas the volunteers and supporters who give through the American Red Cross Kern County and Eastern Sierra Chapter remain unwavering in their commitment to prevent and alleviate human suffering in today's emergencies. Volunteers of the American Red Cross throughout Kern County and Eastern Sierra regions respond to the needs of the community. And whereas in 2024, the Burrell Fire burned areas of Lake Isabella, Red Cross volunteers responded immediately to the needs of the community by setting up shelters and welcoming all misplaced. Their contributions are a beacon of hope by providing comfort in disaster, blood donations, first aid, CPR, AED, and reconnecting loved ones in crisis. And whereas this work to uplift our community is made possible by those who selflessly answer the call to help whenever and wherever needed. We hereby recognize the month of March in honor of their remarkable service and ask everyone in the community to join in their commitment to care for one another. Now therefore, the City Council of the city of Taft does hereby join other cities in proclaiming the month of March 2025 as Red Cross Month in Taft and encouraging all citizens of the city of Taft to reach out and support its humanitarian mission. Dated this 18th day of March 2025, signed by myself and all four council members. So we have two gentlemen here to receive this honor tonight, Hector Vasquez and his photographer, Lucas Vasquez. So, gentlemen.
Hector, come on over here, let's do the picture.
Yeah, I can give us there.
Go ahead, go. There, boy.
Thank you very much. Would you like to address the council, please?
Absolutely.
Councilmembers, Mayor, thank you so much. City of Taft, so really quick, my name is Hector Vasquez. I'm the executive director for the American Red Cross here in Kern and Eastern Sierra. I'm a family man, so my son is joining me. He wants to, once you become a Red Cross volunteer, don't matter the age, you get involved, we give back. And if it's easy as pointing at a phone and putting it up so we could promote the good work that we're doing in all our communities, we will do that. But I just wanted to thank all of you guys for this proclamation. Ever since President Franklin D. Roosevelt did this in 1943, every sitting president has been given the Red Cross a proclamation in the month of March. We continue to provide hope to those in need. We're always looking for new volunteers to join our family. One of the things that we are constantly looking for, especially in our outskirts community, I'm from San Diego, moved here six years ago. Never knew nothing about Kern County, then I moved in and I realized the importance of community. In a big city, you're kind of like nowhere. But in a city, in a county like Kern County, one thing that I really appreciate is how close-knit these communities are, and I've noticed here in Taft, you guys have that. I've got the privilege to work with other business members here in the community, from T-Mobile to CCR and different entities that, and I really appreciate all the work that's being done here locally. So we are looking for, we are looking for new volunteers, especially Spanish-speaking volunteers. One of the major things that doesn't get talked about often, everyone thinks the Red Cross, and we think national disasters, just like our LA wildfires, I was deployed there for three weeks, and the devastation I saw was unimaginable. But one of the things that we do constantly is we respond to all single-family home fires. The fire department actually advises the homeowners to call the Red Cross. We have a team of volunteers called the Disaster Action Team, and they go to the families, they provide assistance, they give them goods that they need. And for most of the time, they actually, we paid and give them financial assistance to go to a hotel if they need to, or just replace things that they had lost. So we're looking for new volunteers, especially Spanish-speaking volunteers. So the one, I do want to promote that, and if any of you or anyone in your networks would like to join us, by all means, we look forward to having you guys. And our Board of Directors is actually very proud to continue the work here in Taft. We partner with, we have board members from all over Kern County, and we are looking to have a Sound the Alarm in the winter months, like November, maybe the fall. Sound the Alarm is a, it's a project program that we do in a community, a one-day event where we come out and we provide free smoke alarm installation to all the residents from a, we work closely with the fire department, and they identify a neighborhood that we should target to make sure that these folks are prepared. So once again, thank you, and we look forward to growing more in this community.
All right, well, thank you very much for coming. Thank you very much for bringing Lucas as well. Lucas, did you drive here?
No.
All right, thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda, item number two. Measure A Citizens Oversight Committee Annual Report and Presentation. City Manager Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. We had our first Citizens Oversight Committee meeting for our Measure A, which was approved by the voters in April 1st, 2022. And our Finance Director Teresa Beinkley will be giving a short presentation on the reports.
Thank you. Teresa, you're up.
Good evening. I am here to present the annual Measure A report on behalf of the Measure A Citizens Oversight Committee. So I'll give a little brief description of what the Measure A is. So Measure A was a voted, a voter-approved 1% sales tax increase. The Measure A was to address the city's fiscal crisis and to prevent cuts to essential city services. Measure A was estimated to bring in an additional revenue of about $1.6 million, and the measure was approved in December of 2021, December of 2021, and took effect April of 2022.
Approved at 73%? Is that correct? Is that recall?
Yes.
Thank you.
So Measure A was approved with the commitment that the funds would be used for safety operations and critical city functions. So maintaining 911 response times, preventing cuts to fire and paramedic service, maintaining the number of police officers, keeping public areas safe, such as the Veterans Memorial Park Relstaterals, and helping maintain streets and roads. So the Citizens Oversight Committee, who are they? So they are five qualified members from our community that have applied and were qualified, and then they volunteer their time to serve at these meetings. It's one meeting a year. These members are not associated with the city at all. They're not city employees, they're not city vendors. They are completely separate from the city, and they volunteer their time, and they're community members. So what are their functions? To annually review how the funds were spent, to review and discuss the annual report, and to decide whether the city utilized the funds according to what the measure outlined. So their first meeting was held on February 26, 2025, and there was unanimous consensus that all the funds that were expended and presented in the report was what the city had committed to do with the funds. So we're just going to go slightly over what is in the report. So in the report, it shows that our actual cash receipts for, now, let me step back for a moment. This report actually covers two fiscal years, because in the bylaws and everything that was set up, our first meeting was going to be in 20, covering 2024, but it actually, as you saw earlier, it took effect April of '22. So this report's going to cover all of that time span to get us caught up, and it just kind of helped get the measure on board and get moving. So we, so by the time we had our first meeting, everything was kind of set, and you could see how it was going. So Measure A funds that were actually collected for fiscal year '23 were slightly short of $2 million. And then the funds that were collected for fiscal year '2024 were slightly short of $2.5 million. So the total cash receipts for those two fiscal years is slightly over $4.4 million.
Can I ask one question? You may.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Don't interrupt you or anything. On that amount, on the taxes, receipts and stuff, is that just the 1% only? Or is that counting the eight and a half as a whole, the time that that grows?
It's one, the 1%.
The 1% generated that much money?
Or the local. This is, this is only for local tax.
The 1%, that's not bad. I think that does help. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Okay, so in here, in this slide, I'm showing what the actual expenses for these departments are. So for fiscal year 2023 and fiscal year 2024, the total actual expenditures for the police department was slightly over $6 million. The actual expense for the fire department was slightly over $1.5 million. For crime prevention, it was slightly over $500,000. And then streets and roads, we spent over slightly, over a million dollars. So for the two fiscal years, the actual expenditures for these departments is $9.2 million. In the next slide, so why I'm bringing that up is because the funds that we collected from the Measure A, as shown in this slide, is you'll see that the, how we allocated it. So out of the $4.4, we allocate it slightly over $2.5 million toward the police department, slightly over $1.5 million for the fire, $75,000, close to $76,000 to crime prevention, and $200,000 to streets and roads. Also, I think it's important in this slide to show that administrative clause was only $9,371, and that was actually not for staff time. That was for, actually, we have a company called HDL that helps monitor and make sure that everybody is reporting the Measure A in the correct format, and everybody is reporting it. And then also for the California Department of Tax and Fee, they charge us administration for collecting those also. So that's where those administration fees are. So it was important to show that the city of Taft is not taking any type of administrative cost out of these funds. These funds are actually going to help support what we had said that they were.
Very good.
And then, so here's the pie chart, kind of just to show that 94% of the $4.4 million went to police and fire, 4% to street and roads, 2% to crime prevention, and not even 1% to admin costs. So that's kind of a visual to show that, you know, how the funds were split up. So in conclusion, the funds are making a fiscal impact within our community. The funds are being utilized as intended. And last slide, thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, any further questions?
We're going to keep doing it.
Any additional questions?
We have a question, this is a statement. I think that this came, the voter approved this, really, really helped out. Not only helped the city in reinforcing our police department, fire department, and other avenues. Wasn't for the vote of the citizens and wanting to have this, we're having our cities staying the same, keeping the crime down low, and having a quality of infrastructure to keep it running normally. And I applaud our citizens for doing this, you know, voting for it, because I supported it, and I voted for it, and a lot of people did, because they want to keep, we have, they're very proud of our police department and fire department. They want to make sure they have all the tools in place to go ahead and perform their duties properly and keep the same level of our infrastructure there. And so I'm just thankful that, just giving thanks to the community for supporting this, and we're going to back to them with as intended. Thank you.
I want to thank you for the transparency. I want to thank the four members of the Citizens Advisory Committee. Three, so we have two openings now.
Correct.
Okay, so for everybody out there, this is your money. This is your government, this is the people of the city of Taft. We have openings for two qualified individuals who would be willing to spend some of their time for one annual meeting to lend a hand in ensuring that the people's money goes where we said it would go. So if you're out there and you didn't know that there were two openings, there are now two openings.
And we will start recruitment in the next couple of months to fill those seats. At the same time, we recruit for the three openings you'll have on the planning commission.
All right.
We're going to run them concurrently.
Run them concurrently, very good. Well, thank you very much, and thank you, Teresa, appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
All right, next up, item number three, citizens request public comments.
We have none.
We have none, all right. Item number four, then, council statements, non-action. Councilman Cryer, begin with you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Everybody know that things are happening here in Taft and growing. We're getting some new interest in business, and like was stated last council meeting, is some of the stuff is, we can't give out any names of what's, and the different businesses, because it's now still anonymous, they don't want to be known yet. But things are happening and moving and stuff. And I understand now that the Colston's Estate, as far as houses and stuff, is going through escrow. So that will also give us more opportunities for new homes to offer to people who want to buy a modern home, and some also workhouse for people looking for homes to, for work and at a lower rate in prices. Things are going, it does move slow, nothing happens, because a lot of people like to come out and look at the community and see what it's like, and what's, things are viable here, if you have enough people willing to fill those jobs and positions. But things are coming along, but slow. And hopefully, when time comes, we can reveal the names and different businesses that are going to come to our town. I'm sure you'll hear about the Kern Planning Commission. So keep an eye out, listen to them, when they approve permits and different news that's coming through there. But anyway, I'm just happy to say that, and just have patience. Unfortunately, this takes time, government don't move real fast. There's got to be one step ahead of California, state of California. You know, if you think we're taking two steps, we're inevitably going back three steps sometimes. But eventually, we'll get ahead of them and do some wonderful things. That's all I have to say, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much, sir. Councilman Waldrop.
I'm proud to say that, I wish that gentleman would have stayed here, but Lake Isabella, our Lions Club went up there right after that fire to help the people. And we took them in, and we got them groceries and whatnot. But anyway, it was a pretty neat, pretty neat experience, and I was glad I went. And we got some kind of awards afterwards, but wasn't there for that. And speaking of the Lions Club, I'd like to mention that the Taft Lions is going to take up the yard sales, and it will be done properly. It'll be cleaned up after each yard sale, everything's going to be like it should. And we'll make the city proud of them letting us do that there. And we haven't got a date yet, but it won't be long. And that way, the money will go mostly, mostly, dogs and cats, try to get them spayed and neutered, whatever. But I just thought I'd let everybody know that. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, sir. There is a lot of changes taking place in the United States of America, in government, in regulations, in attitudes concerning regulations. And they will trickle down. Some of them are already having an impact in the state of California. So keeping up with these things is a full-time job. They change almost daily. But from a personal perspective, I will tell you that I am encouraged by what I see and what I read and the people that I talk to involved in government, and a refocus, a renaissance, if you will, on the facts, especially emerging facts, and not always setting policy and regulations based on the view through green-tinted, rose-colored glasses, if you will. So I do believe there is change of foot, and I look forward to that. One other little thing that I want to remind everybody of, because the fellow that used to sit right here, Randy Miller, would tell you right now that we have had, thank goodness, a bunch of rain and moisture. On the backside of that, we're going to have sunshine, and we're going to have some more rain, it's more sunshine. So what's that do?
More weeds.
That grows weeds. So everybody, weeds are far easier to kill when they're that big than when they're that big, including the weeds that might grow up behind your house, if you have an alley behind your house. So do your part, you know? Take pride in where you live, and weed control is a tiny little part of doing just that. So I encourage everybody to keep an eye out for the greenery that you really don't want. And that's all I have this evening. Item number five, department reports.
Chief. Good evening, everyone. First, I want to acknowledge the Red Cross. In 2015, I was a sergeant for the Kern County Sheriff's Department. I was in search and rescue. We did a manhunt for an individual in the Kelso Valley Pacific Coast Trail. And Red Cross was there, and I was tasked with logistics rooms. We had SWAT teams from every area of California coming to assist us. And the Red Cross was huge in that area. They continued to provide meals, keep our law enforcement personnel nourished and out on the streets, and up in the mountains, actually, and hunting for this individual, which we ultimately closed that case with him being brought to justice. That's all I'm going to say about that.
I remember that.
So Red Cross, nothing but kudos, appreciate them so much. And I was in, working hand-in-hand with them during that time as the sergeant in charge of logistics and the food and the housing. So it was, it was appreciated that they were there to help us. And with that said, I'm going to move on to, we had a sit operation. And a sit operation, and we explained sit, sit is street inter- And a SIT operation, and we explained SIT, SIT is Street Interdiction Task Force, and it is brought through grant funds that are provided to counties. And lo and behold, Kern County is one of the, is the third largest county in California. So, therefore, we have a large amount of funds that are given to California for these task forces. And these task forces consist of, the money is actually managed by the Ridgecrest Police Department at one time. And I mean, it went from Taft to other areas. And what we do is put together task force for probation. And it's probation searches for individuals on probation with felony warrants. And we flood cities with their permission through, basically, all departments in Kern County. All law enforcement agencies come together as a team, and we then go to certain cities that allow us to come in, and we do probation searches once we're, you know, where there are manpower, where they can only do so many in a period of time, where we can do 30, 40 in a night. And we actually had one Friday, the 14th, here in City of Taft. And I want to thank all the law enforcement personnel that showed up. We had individuals from every law enforcement agency that I can think of through Kern County, except maybe some smaller ones that weren't able to, with staffing levels, provide individuals. So, personnel-wise, we were up in the 70s with personnel, and that was including our individuals from the City of Taft. Very successful, 14 arrests, which were immediately booked into Kern County Jail. We had transportation of our own means, transporting with the county of Kern. Kudos to the county of Kern and their sheriff. And then, we also did three sites in the field. We kept one where that person was detained until, at our time limits in our jail, till we could interview for some additional crimes. And it was very successful. So, if everybody saw those vehicles that night, I just want to put everybody's mind at ease that it was a joint task force with all our departments, and we came in, and it was very productive and plentiful, I should say. So, and you'll see those again. We're looking at, we would love to have another one in the City of Taft when we have the opportunity. But we share those funds with all of Kern County. And just so you know, and it's all reimbursable, but it doesn't cost the city much, except for maybe a little food and water and some snacks. But other than that, the outcome is worth the expense, definitely.
Very good. I did see, talk about a coordinated effort across so many different departments. So, kudos to everybody involved, and you got bad guys off the streets.
We definitely did.
That's what you did.
We found some new bad guys as well.
Found some new bad guys, well, good. Take them someplace where they belong, and that is not in the general population of the City of Taft.
Outside the city limits. And just to clarify, we did venture into Maricopa, McKittrick, Dustin Acres, Valley Acres, and so, it was very profitable in my, in my line of business, if you call it profitable.
When people do bad things to good people, there should be consequences.
Absolutely, I fully agree.
El Salvador.
Thank you very much, sir, and thank all your troops.
Thank you.
I don't have a planning department. No?
They do not need.
Okay, all right. I saw a planning commissioner back there, and I just was immediately drawn. I just want you to know. Okay, then. Next up, item number six, City Manager Statement.
Thank you, Mayor. This is more of a statement for Department Reports under Public Works. We were successful in a grant we wrote for hazard elimination, which is going to fund $700,000 worth of intersection improvements in and around the schools. So, it'll be high-visibility crosswalks, LED signs, and mild LED mile-per-hour feedback signs.
Very good.
And we are getting close to going to construction on our intersection improvement at San Antonio 10th, which will include a median turnpocket and kind of a pedestrian safety project there as well. That one was funded, and design is taking place now, so we should be going to construction here in the next couple of months.
That's fantastic, investing in the safety of our community. I can't think of a better place to put our money.
Well, if you remember, we had a citizen that was concerned with those very intersections. And although we did have some striping and signs, that did prompt us to look at a application, which we were successful. And those things are not cheap. So, that's, you know, citizen involvement can, you know, get us to do something sometimes.
All right, very good. I know there's some others that we've been talking about in a meeting we just had recently, and we'll continue to think outside the box and look for things to improve upon. So, thank you for that report.
Thank you.
Next up, item number seven, City Attorney Statement. Jason?
Thank you, no statements, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thanks, sir. Item number eight, Future Agenda Requests?
No.
You know, this is not a gender request, this is a staff request. I would ask that, given the upcoming spring break and the meeting in April, I think it's April 15th, if we would take a hard look at just exactly who all is going to be here, as well as all of the issues that need to be dealt with. So, if we can, if we can plan the people's business such that we take care of it expeditiously, at least efficiently, just in case we don't have sufficient number of people here to have a meeting, I would appreciate it if perhaps we would look into that.
We would do that.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, next item on the agenda is Consent Calendar Items 9 through 15. All items listed on the consent calendar shall be considered routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the City Council requests specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Any item removed from the consent calendar will be considered after the regular business items. Are there any items on the consent calendar that any member of the public would like to comment on? Seeing no hands, those items are: Item number nine, the minutes for the March 4th meeting. Item number 10, the payment of bills, some $650,000 worth. Item number 11, unmet transit needs in the City of Taft. Recommendation is a motion to adopt a resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Taft Making Findings Regarding Unmet Transit Needs in the City of Taft, and Find That the Activity is Not a Project per the California Environmental Quality Act (SEQA) as Set forth in Section 15060C3 and Section 15378 of the SEQA Guidelines." Item number 12, Funding to the Taft Chamber of Commerce for the quarter of July 2024 to September 2024. Recommendation is a motion to approve the 25% allocation of the Transit Occupancy Tax to the Taft Chamber of Commerce for the quarter of July 2024 through September 2024, and find that the activity is not a project per the California Environmental Quality Act (SEQA) as Set forth in Section 15060C3 and Section 15378 of the SEQA Guidelines. Item 13, Funding to the Taft Chamber of Commerce for the quarter of October 2024 to December of 2024. Recommendation is a motion to approve the 25% allocation of the Transit Occupancy Tax to the Taft Chamber of Commerce for the quarter of October 2024 through December 2024, and find that the activity is not a project per the California Environmental Quality Act (SEQA) as Set forth in Section 15060C3 and Section 15378 of the SEQA Guidelines. Item 14 is a Low Carbon Transit Operation Program (LCTOP) for fiscal year 2024-2025 certifications and assurances and authorized agent forms for zero-emission transit bus. The recommendation is a motion to adopt a resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Taft Authorizing the Execution of the Certifications and Assurances and Authorized Agent Forms for the Low Carbon Transit Operations Program (LCTOP) fiscal year 2024-2025, for the following project: Purchase of a Zero-Emission Transit Bus Using $24,385 in LCTOP Funds, and find that the activity is not a project per the California Environmental Quality Act (SEQA) as Set forth in Section 15060C3 and Section 15378 of the SEQA Guidelines." Lastly, item number 15 is the purchase of 29-millimeter Glock Model 45 pistols with red-dot Trigicon RMR sights, 15 TLR 7X 500 Lumen mini-lights, and 20 Safari Land Retention III holsters for Taft Police Department. The recommendation is a motion to accept the sole source quote provided by Proforce in the amount of $26,177.79, and authorize the Chief of Police to sign and accept the quote, and find that the activity is not a project per the California Environmental Quality Act (SEQA) as Set forth in Section 15060C3 and Section 15378 of the SEQA Guidelines. Does any council member wish to remove any of the items from the consent calendar?
No.
Hearing none, at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve Consent Calendar Items 9 through 15.
Motion second.
I have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Cryer?
Yes.
Councilmember Waldrop?
Yes.
Mayor North?
Yes, and that passed on a three-oh vote with two excused absences. That brings the open session of this evening's meeting to a close. This council will be going into closed session for two items. Item A, Conference with Legal Counsel: Anticipated Litigation, One Undisclosed Case, Government Code Section 54956.9B. And Item B, Conference with Legal Counsel: Existing Litigation, Government Code Section 54956.9A, Taft Union High School versus the City of Taft. Thank you all for being a part of this evening's meeting. We are adjourned to closed session.